And join me for the pledge, I won't put this thing on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll officially open the meeting, I guess, for the Greater Idaho discussion. Do you wanna come up?
I can't hear you.
Sorry, is that better?
Lot better.
Okay, I'm bad about that.
Glad you opened the mic up, my hearing is not the best. Good morning, Commissioner Scholinger.
Yes.
Nice to meet you in person, the last time it was uh...
Over the...
Over the street.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Yeah. Commissioner Alvinson, nice to see you.
You too. Will you go ahead and state your name for the record?
I will do that. Mike McCarter, would you like my address? Don't need that, okay, that's fine. I'd like to give a little bit of recap as to what's going on with Greater Idaho throughout Eastern and Southern Oregon, and then ask a few questions, um, trying to get to the point and not drag things on.
Can you guys hear in the back? Can you hear Burner?
Not like that, I understand it, it's not talking into the mic.
Yeah. You can move the, you can move the mic too.
In May of two thousand twenty-one, a Lake County voters passed a measure that reads, "The Lake County Board of Commissioners shall meet on the fourth Wednesday of every January, May, and September to discuss how to promote the interests of Lake County in any negotiations regarding relocations of Idaho's state borders." There's a little bit more to that irrespective of any other meeting dates that may be determined by the board. To date, eight counties have passed similar measures, with Arnie County being the most recent, uh, passing it in November by sixty-three percent. Kalamath and Douglas Counties will be on the ballot in May of this year. Uh, they met their signature requirements, and so they'll be up for the primary election. We still have active petitions going in Curry, Josephine, Morrow, and Yuma-Tellock Counties. So, uh, we're trying to get enough signatures in to get it on the ballot in those particular question, uh, particular counties. Your ballot measure by far passed by seventy-four percent of the voters, which is the largest passing percentage of any of the counties so far. So it kinda leads us to believe that there's a lot of people in Lake County that are a little bit unhappy with what's going on, frustrated with Oregon's leadership. And that's a question that I'd like to ask you commissioners. How do you feel about the direction that Oregon's leadership is going and how they're treating Southern and Eastern Oregon Counties?
Do you want me to, you want me to start? Well, hopefully everybody knows how I feel. The leadership that we have on this side of the mountain, whether it be Representative Mark Owens, Representative Reschke, Representative Breeze Iverson, Senator Finley, um, Representative Daniel Bonham, Senator Lithicum, uh, Senator Bill Hansel. I probably left out a few, but, um, those people are working very hard for us. On the other side of the mountain, I'm not very happy with it. And I'm totally discouraged that we have to, like I've, I've said this publicly before, and I'll say it again. When I came on as a commissioner, I did not realize that most of my work would be fighting our own state government. And the, um, unfunded mandates and the different sort of thing. I'm, I'm totally discouraged, it wears you out, and, you know, I believe there's starting to make a turn. We'll see this next election what happens, but, um, that's what I have to say much. You know, I do not support any, virtually anything that's happened, you know, that's came down the road, so.
Thank you.
I've seen it, Commissioner Williams is on. Um, yeah, the senators and representatives that Commissioner Alvinson, uh, spoke of definitely have been helping us, and every time we need help, I can pick up the phone and talk to them. They're looking for ways to help, help us, so very, very appreciative of that. In particular, Representative Owens and Senator Finley, from this point forward. And they're gonna be our two representatives from this point forward. Um, I think you, we saw a classic example of it when the governor announced that they wanted to close our prison. And, uh, you know, so we, we got to feel that right up front and whatnot. Luckily, we had a very good organization here locally, we didn't take no for the answer, and we worked hard. But the part that I think is important is that you still have to have those tough conversations with people you don't agree with. And I think that if, uh, you know, that paid off, being the Warren Creek staying here. Uh, we wound up having to have those tough conversations and, and, uh, you know, not playing the blame game or things like that. So it paid off. Now, Greater Idaho probably is gonna have to have conversations across both aisles too, you know, in order for it to be successful. I think a hundred percent blame game just won't get anywhere. And, uh, so that's kinda where I feel that. Like, you gotta be able to have those frank conversations and be able to talk, uh, have those tough discussions of people that you don't necessarily agree with on everyday life decisions.
I, I would agree with both your comments on your state representatives and your state senators. And down here, you've got quite a mix, it seems like, when I look at Lake County, who represents you. Um, I talked to a state representative out of the northwest part of Oregon yesterday, and he said, "Your, your representation is being heard, before you just stop voting." And that's where it stands right there. They have the vote, they have the agenda, and they're pushing it forward, and even though they listen or they hear, it doesn't matter at all. Would you be willing to send a letter to?
Yeah, and, and Mike, that, that's, that's my fault. I was supposed to create a letter to send to Rep. Owens, to send to Senator Finley, and Commissioner Scholinger reminded me of it this morning, and I, I didn't get that done. But I got it on my list, and I'll have it before the end of the week. And, but I did make the phone call to Rep. Owens, and, uh, I don't remember if I did to Senator Finley, but we did have the discussion about talking, our legislatures talking with Idaho's state legislators. Um, if you read the news from Idaho, their state legislature seems to know more about it and be more involved than our own. And so we just gotta, like, catch up on that end, and part of that's my fault, and I apologize on that. Um, I think we, I think there's some things we have to work out, but I think you're gaining traction, you know? Especially from the first meeting, you know, and up to now, you know, there was a lot of questions that needed to be answered. I don't think there's one of us that would not want something like this to happen just because we're so tired of being beat up. On the other hand, like I explained to Mr. Storey yesterday, um, when, I can't remember the dude that ran up against the governor this last time. Anyways, Eastern Oregon only voted thirty-five percent of the Republicans voted. And one northern county was at sixteen percent, and Lake County was only at the thirty-five percent average. And if we'd have had eighty percent voter turnout, we wouldn't be in the spot we're in right now. And so, people, like I told people before, you know, I didn't necessarily ever wanna get into politics. I wanted to help my community, but most of us living out on the east side of the mountain, we just wanna be left alone, right? That's why we live here. But we can't afford to do that anymore. We got, all of us, not just me, not just our state representatives, but our whole communities have to stand up and say, "We're not doing this anymore. We gotta start voting, we gotta start participating in the process." And that also, you know, we also know that the state of Idaho has been totally engorged with people coming out of the state of California, and especially in Boise. It's, the demographics are starting to change as far as red and blue. And it's happened in Deschutes County on this side of the mountain. And so we gotta take those things into consideration when we're thinking about this, you know? Yes, it would be great if we could be involved, but with the state of Idaho, but on the other hand, there's stuff that we have to do in between, is my thought. But anyways, I didn't wanna take away from you.
Yeah, good, good points. I mean, we, we in Eastern and Southern Oregon, because our votes haven't counted, have bred in a thing, "Why should I even vote? Because it's not gonna matter." Uh, I think you've gotta jump on it when seventy-four percent of the people vote that they wanna see something happen with Greater Idaho. I think you've gotta jump on it with, with the state prison issue, uh, how we respond there. Idaho's legislature gotta jump on Oregon's legislature because they invited the CM, and I had an opportunity to talk to about a third or more of their legislature about Greater Idaho. And they resoundingly, um, accepted and wanted to start those negotiations, start the discussions. And in fact, I believe you're gonna see a, a letter coming from their legislature to Oregon's legislature asking to get some discussions started there. So, yes, from the very beginning, because this is a grassroots movement, it's taken time step by step. Uh, we've come a long ways, but we've got a long ways to go with it. So I, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to send that letter up to Senator Finley and Representative Owens. I talked to them, and they said, "Well, we haven't heard a lot from, from the commissioners in the counties with it." And so my push is to get that, that part going there too. Um, another question is, should, should the county be responsible for finding, fact-finding regarding moving the Oregon border? Or should that be at the state level? Do you think, in your feelings?
I think the county's gotta have some kind of responsibility, otherwise you won't get any movement, right? The, the reps aren't gonna move unless the county moves first, normally.
Agreed.
And so, um, and I, I do wanna bring up also that Senator Finley, um, him and Rep. Owens and Representative Breeze Iverson had a virtual, uh, town hall, I think it was Monday, Monday night, and Senator Finley did bring up that eleven, uh, counties in his district passed the new Idaho, Greater Idaho. I say new Idaho, 'cause there's a community out here that's called the Idaho, sorry. And, uh, so it's getting there. And so, yeah, so I think we have to do part of it, but the state legislature has gotta do the heavy lifting, right? And so they take directions from their counties and their district. And so, once the counties, you know, I think, I think the biggest problem was when this first started, Mike, that I don't think any of us thought that it could be done.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I don't feel that way anymore, so.
I have a question from online. You mentioned a letter to Senator Finley and Rep. Owens, can you expound on what the contents of that letter might be?
Probably just that our support for the movement. Um, support for the movement and also to bring it forth to the state legislature to start having discussions at the state level.
Are you aware of the, of the recent survey USA poll that was done in Northwest Oregon about this? Two of the questions on that poll, which, there was only four or five questions, so it wasn't, uh, you know, a huge poll number of question-wise. Should Oregon's state government look into the causes of discontent in Eastern and Southern Oregon, then consider how the state government should respond? Now, this was to Northwest Oregon citizens. Eighty-one percent said yes to that, ten percent no, nine percent not sure.
That was a USA poll?
Survey USA poll of Northwest Oregon people.
I had not heard that.
Yeah, that came out a little over a week ago.
That's great information.
It is. The second question, which is really what we're talking about right now. Should Oregon's state government look into what the effect of Oregon would be if Oregon counties became part of Idaho, and how the transition could be done smoothly? Sixty-eight percent said yes, twenty percent no, twelve percent not sure.
I, I agree with that, because, uh, you know, the conversations we have had on Greater Idaho, really a lot of it comes down to, "What are the details?" Well, everybody gets frustrated because we don't know the details.
Right.
And we don't know what the causes and effects would be, uh, where people would land as far as jobs or retirement benefits or things like that, who they would work for, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, depending on who you work for, things like that. So that is a, an important topic that would help, I think, people make better decisions about where they truly wanna land. If, if the, if the facts came back that something was completely upside down, and it didn't make sense for Oregonians, then, you know, that's a factor, but, but if it isn't, and it's, uh, something that, uh, it's gonna help Eastern Oregon, you know, those are things that we, uh, you know, we need to know.
And in the state legislature, those are the decision makers. You know, I mean, our vote counts, um, county by county, because it sends an indication to the state legislature what people in Eastern and Southern Oregon are thinking about. And, and our vote all the way along has been to try to get the discussion going. So we're, we're pushing hard to get this moved up to the state legislature where decisions on piers and prisons and hospitals and roads, those figures and facts and everything can be talked about, both between, within Oregon, but between Oregon and Idaho too, and bring all that information forward. So it, it's, I've tried to dig some of it out, but some places I can't go because it's a government issue. So that, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to push a, a, a committee in the Oregon legislature that, that would, the basic topic would be sources and solutions for discontent in Eastern and Southern Oregon. Now, notice that I didn't say Greater Idaho win there or move Oregon's border. I said, "Let's start looking at what the sources and potential solutions of this discontent, discontent is." Now, we know that a majority of the vote comes out of Northwest Oregon. I agree with you. We need, as people throughout Southern and Eastern Oregon, we need to get out and vote. We need to vote. We need to find people of our kind, of conservatives, to get in, in positions of office, whether it be school board, whether it be county commissioners, whether it be garbage tenant, whatever. I mean, if there's a position out there, we should try to make sure that there is a good representation of candidates. So, you know, I would appreciate the letter going out to, because I've talked to Senator Finley and Representative Owens, and they come back and say, "Mike, we haven't heard from, from the counties." I'm making a point in the next five months, in every one of these meetings on every one of the counties, just to share that information there. So, end of my field. Do you have any questions? And good morning, Commissioner Williams.
So there's a, there's a one question, one more. So have you ever thought of, uh, hiring somebody to, um, what's the dang word? Lobby? A lobbyist?
We have.
And that would be my question, because lobbyists, if you have a lobbyist that's virtually every day, every week at the Capitol, both this and that, are bringing these thoughts to the forefront all the time, and, uh, that might help the cause. And like I say, it's my fault that I didn't get that letter. I told these guys that I would. So.
We have thought about lobbyists, but under current conditions, when, who knows when the Capitol is gonna be open and closed, or people are gonna be allowed in it, or, or whatever, it's just, I mean, I've... Like I mentioned, last April, I spoke to the Idaho legislature, or a good portion of them. I'd love to do it with the Oregon legislature, just to inform them of what's going on from over here and whatnot. But, you know, uh, everything seems to be done, Zoom, you know, meetings, Skype, face-to-face over, over the internet and whatnot, and it's hard to do on a lobbyist's thing. The other point is, we're a grassroots movement with no political support, no corporate support, so we, we've gotta watch our pennies really close on that end, and none of our people are paid. We're all volunteers. So that would be a step for us, uh, to take in, hire a lobbyist to do it. But I, I totally agree with you, to have somebody there on, on a regular basis, especially once when the Capitol opens up. As long as they're not carrying a gun, we're okay. Any other question?
All right, maybe.
I'll try to make every one of these meetings, by the way, because, uh, you were, you were the first commissioner that I reached out to, when this started way back in the very beginning, and sat and talked for quite a while, and, uh, to get to know how this works, how it's gonna, and it, it has evolved with a lot, and more and more people are, are getting on board and seeing, you know, "We didn't think you'd climb a mountain like this." But one step at a time, it seems to be getting higher and higher up the mountain. But, uh, we gotta get it into the state legislature, that's, that's what's gotta be talked about. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mike, Mike. Thank you for taking the time to come down, too.
I want that road, 'cause there's no traffic on it.
Do we have any other public comments? Well, I guess, does, do you guys have any comments?
Not really. I mean, Mike alluded, when he first approached us, me and him, we sat and talked for several hours about all the issues that could come from something like this, you know? And what we ended up with was just more questions, and a lot of unanswered questions. Still, to this day, we haven't answered. And I think echoing his point about, you know, getting this into the legislature where some of those conversations can be had, you know, between Oregon and Idaho, those are the... That's where a lot of these things have to take place. The county commissioners, you know, we can definitely, you know, speak to the support that, uh, or speak to the fact that we completely understand, identify, and recognize the mass frustration with the population, with the lack of representation that we've seen from Salem. But, uh, there's only so much we can do. There's a lot of questions that we just can't answer.
So, so Mike, what about...
I do have one question out of listening to him talk. No matter what we say or decide here in Eastern Oregon, the state legislature is the one that's gonna make the decision?
Yep. Well, and that's only one part of a three-part decision, really, I mean, we need to have...
What we decide here in Lake County doesn't mean anything?
Well, it does. You know, we can't, we can't say that our vote doesn't mean anything, or our comments don't mean anything, because that goes right back to the reason that nobody showed up to vote against Governor Brown, because it's not gonna do any good anyways, you know, if I vote. Well, damn, it's gonna do good. And so you've got, that's what I'm saying. You can't just think that we're gonna run up the flagpole. You guys, the community, has to send letters to your representatives, send letters to your state senator, say, "We wanna see this talked about." Um, and, could you imagine if seventy-five percent of the people that voted for the movement all wrote letters to our senators and representatives? That makes a difference. And so, yes, like Commissioner Williams said, we can only run it so far up the flagpole. And then it's up to our state representatives to do the rest.
Well, they reach that flagpole at the top end, at state legislation then.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it help to group up several people and, and go speak to one of the meetings in Salem?
Well, that's the thing, but they, the, the Capitol's been closed for two years.
Well, I, I've gotten too old to do this sort of thing. I, I have been before then a couple of times on some different thing, but, uh, I've gotten old that I can't really stay with certain subjects. Uh, I'm in my mid-eighties. And then diabetes, I get dry tub, and I could, I get there and couldn't speak in the first place, and so.
Write a letter.
I, I feel like I, I feel like I'm lost.
Uh, Mr. Alvinson, uh, who did we write to?
You can write to...
Who would be the best to write to?
I, I would write to ours representatives and senators right now. Our rep is Representative Mark Owens. I don't have his contact information, but...
I can look it up.
And, yeah, you can look it up. And then, uh, Senator Lynn Finley.
Finley.
That's our state senator. Is Lithicum still with ours?
No.
See, well, they did the deal with the districts, so we, we had, before, we had Nikki Breeze Iverson, we had, um...
Reschke.
Representative Reschke, Senator Lithicum, Senator Finley, and Representative Mark Owens. Now we only have two. We went from five to two.
Okay.
Which is, could be good.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Mark, what are you writing, who are you sending it to?
Representative Owens and Resch, uh, Finley.
Can you send it to everyone? You get them talking on both sides of the road, you'll say, "Hey, you know, Lake County wants this to happen." You'll just start the fire, can we send it to more than just those two?
I, I'm also having a meeting with Association of Oregon Counties on the tenth of this month, or, uh, February, and I can bring it up there. And so the Association of Oregon Counties... And so the Association of Oregon Counties, they take care of all the counties. And, you know, that might be a good talking point there too, since more and more of our southern and eastern counties are. There's another representative group of commissioners called the Eastern Oregon County Association. And, uh, we have a meeting at the end of the month. Actually, uh, next Monday with them, it's online. Uh, that, that will be, I'm sure it's going to be a topic, that discussion as well, so.
Where do we look up to find it online?
That one won't, it's not a public meeting, I don't think. It's just a county commissioner meeting. Discussing various topics affecting eastern Oregon counties. So obviously this would be one that would affect.
Remember, you, you talked about getting the information out. If you noticed in the papers, in our local paper, your meeting is just now today in the paper. You get a lot more people probably turn up at this meeting where it can be put out to the public more. If that was at least a week ahead of when the meeting is going to be.
I should have also stayed more on top of that, so that's partially my fault as well.
I agree with you. I got an email two weeks ago from the movement about this meeting out in San Diego then on days before the papers about it. It also, I wouldn't be here.
Okay, we'll work on that. Did you get a finish for you?
Oh, just, just the fact that, you know, even if Oregon legislature were to take this up. And you were able to get this up the flagpole where they were able to make a decision, even if, you know, by a miracle, Oregon decided, okay, yeah, we'll do this. You still have, Idaho still has to take us. And you still need to get Idaho legislature on board and then you still need to get Washington DC on board. So there's three legislatures you have to go through to make something like this happen.
So what happens is. Oregon and Idaho legislation have to agree to make the transition. And then Congress has to approve it. But once we get to the point of two states agreeing with each other. The likelihood of Congress not doing what those two states want to do is not.
Very slim.
Yeah, very slim. And so that's why it's a lot easier. Like Mike could probably testify to this. We've all heard of the state of Jefferson, where they wanted to create another state. That's almost virtually impossible because you don't have anybody supporting it, uh, no state supporting it. This is a moving of a border, which has happened. You've told me before somewhere.
Many, many times.
The states have moved borders. And so, once we get it to that level of two states agreeing with each other, Congress more likely will pass it. It's just a matter of, but we're a damn sight further ahead than we were last May, right, Mike?
It's like eating an elephant one bite at a time and you just keep working at it and we're not giving up.
Yeah, so. Missers, did you guys have any more comments?
Got a question. You said all this, people are donating their time. Is there a, uh, place where a person can send money for those people that's using their own gas? Maybe a motel room or whatever, you know what I'm saying? You guys are doing it on your own. We should be helping you.
Bless your heart.
No, really. We're part of, we're part of the system, right? These guys can't take money out of their pocket for all of us. It's a group deal, right?
Supporting the system.
Right, so.
GreaterIdaho.org is our website. GreaterIdaho.org and you can donate on that. And by the way, we have had donations coming in from Connecticut, New York, Florida. All over the United States, people have sent money in because they want to see a win-win situation here with it. Um, and it, it, it melts my heart when I read some of the, the comments that they send with their donation. And it might be ten dollars, but to them, they're, they're trying to help. And it's so that the donations that come in are not only from Oregon and Idaho, or the people that are in favor. It, it's from all over the place. We had a, we had a Facebook page. We got a new one that we're working on now. We lost our, our major group page on January sixth of last year. Because we were considered an insurrectionist group. And so we lost twelve thousand contacts in one fell swoop when Facebook says, nope, your site's gone. But it, but we're building it back. But thank you for asking that question. I should have, I should have mentioned it.
What's it called, Greater Idaho?
GreaterIdaho.org, O-R-G. That's our website.
You know what might also help is making like a few short brochure pamphlet type things. When you go to each of these meetings, you can start handing these out and. You know, since Facebook isn't allowing you to do it, we're going to have to do it the old fashioned way.
GreaterIdaho.org also has a lot of questions and answers. So some of the facts that we've been able to research, uh, um, as far as the, the movement of the border are in there. But there only are facts that we've researched out. It's, it's not independent per se or at the state level.
So I heard that, um, there are some counties that aren't on the Greater Idaho map. Marion County, which is Salem, Polk County, which is. The other side of Salem. They're wanting to get in too. And it's like, we're, we're done with this. And I've talked to their commissioners about it and I'm sure.
The Polk County Commissioners actually called us and wanted to know if they can build a bridge across Marion County.
I wish I could. You know, I've, I've heard it from Lynn County also on there. Uh, yeah, uh, and, and we're talking to representatives all across the state, just trying to get the facts out to them. To get the discussions going and, uh. In that, in that one, Commissioner Williams, you didn't hear the poll question, I don't think, on a survey USA. Where eighty-one percent of the people in Northwest Oregon said that, um. They think the state legislature should pick this up and start working at it. There, which is unreal as far as a number, because that, that is people who we think, well, they won't let us go. Well, frankly, they've already let us go. You know, they do hear our representatives. But like I said, you know, yesterday in the discussion, it said, you're just outvoted, that's all. They hear what Senator Finley's saying and what Representative Owens is saying, uh, Senator Lithgow. They're hearing it. They don't care. They're just got their vote and they're just taking it on with it. So I wish we could pick and choose counties, you know, that. All I can say is that if it becomes Idaho crossed on this side, they don't have very far to go to, to move.
That's what the Polk County Commissioner told us. So because, you know, before I started as a commissioner, I thought like Polk County was liberal. And I thought Marion County and Salem was liberal. They have all red, um, commissioners. And so they're definitely wanting something to happen. They're discouraged as we are, so. Anyways, with that, you guys have any more comments? We'll adjourn the meeting at ten forty. Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks, Commissioner.